To call the city council meeting to order. You could all stand for a moment of silence.
Thank you. If you could turn and face a flag for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You all may be seated.
Clerk, would you call the roll call of council members?
Lehman?
Here.
Podak?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Grine?
Here.
Mendoza?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
All right, we're all here. Minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to approve those minutes. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, those do carry. Communications?
I have none.
All right, report of the committees. Finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's nothing new to report, but our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 20th at 5:30 PM in council chambers.
All right, thank you very much. Public affairs committee.
There are a couple of community events coming up, including preschool pals, anatomy of a worm, at the Fruth Wentland Nature Preserve on Thursday, May 15th at 4:00 PM for children ages three to five years. Registration is required at least 24 hours in advance via the Sinica Parks website. And the first farmers and artisan market of the year will take place downtown on Saturday, May 17th from 9:00 to 1:00. Thank you, that is all.
Thank you. Law and ordinance committee.
Just a reminder that we will meet again on Tuesday, May 20th at 5:15 here in council chambers.
At 15:00, May 20th, thank you. Report of officers. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask council to consider waiving the three reading rule for the first two ordinances that we are looking at. The first one is to move money so that we can order the equipment for the splash pad. The second one is to move money so that we can order equipment for the inclusive playground. Sooner we get the orders in, the sooner the equipment comes. I would also ask that you consider waiving the three reading rule for the next to the last piece of resolution, which is dealing with the airport. We need to pass this resolution in order to get our grant application in within the proper timeframe. And that's all, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Safety service director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have quite a bit tonight, so bear with me. This is probably going to be the most I've ever talked at one of these meetings. Tonight, we have a couple of special guests. First up, Matt Summerfeld from the Ohio Department of Transportation. He's here to present some information regarding the proposed County Line Road Diet. This concept stems from a comprehensive safety study that was conducted prior to COVID-19, with the final report being concluded in the fall of '21. Please note that this potential project would be funded through ODOT safety dollars and federal funds, not city dollars. I've reviewed the safety study that has been provided to the city, and the purpose of it was to analyze accident data and identify high-risk areas in our transportation network. Several corridors and intersections were flagged due to the frequency and severity of traffic incidents, some of which include fatalities. Some of these main areas are Main, Perry, and Elm Street, County Line Road, South Street, High Street, and as well as some specific intersections that pose issues for truck turning movements. One notable proposable change that I'm sure Mr. Summerfeld will present is along Main Street from south to high, where the traffic signal at Main and Tiffin would potentially be replaced with four-way stop signs. And in addition, new ADA compliant crosswalks and curb ramps would be installed to improve pedestrian accessibility and safety. I know that this is not the first time that this has been presented to city council, but this is the first time that this has been presented to this specific group of individuals. So it's nothing super new, but maybe to some of you it is. We are being asked to make a decision on this project by June 2nd, allowing for two readings ahead of that vote if we include tonight. So when we get to the public portion, Matt and his team will present the project on the screen behind you. Second up is, we have Ben Cooley from CMT, and this is what Mayor Minnell was speaking about for that airport grant. And like he said, we do ask that you suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions as we need this resolution to go ahead and submit for grant funding. Just to give you a little bit of reasoning behind that, we were not provided with the documents until April 10th. And even if we would have brought that up at the last meeting, it only would have been allowed one reading. So he will go ahead and present that as well. Want to touch base real quick on the city building front entrance. I realize it's like a maze to get in here, but everything is going well, and we actually just approved plans to redo the vestibule and the water office entrance. So everything there will be ADA accessible. So we're super excited about that. And then the last thing is the Dynegy Community Electric Aggregation Program. I've been receiving a high volume of calls regarding that, and I just want to provide some clarification for both council and the public. This is an opt-out program, and residents are automatically enrolled unless they take action to decline participation. The opt-out deadline is May 16th. And if you receive a letter, they provide you three separate ways to opt out. I've been getting a lot of calls about people not getting those letters. And I just want to clarify that you have to live within the city of Fostoria, and residents who are currently under contract with another energy supplier are not eligible for this program and therefore won't receive a letter and don't have to worry about opting out. So if anybody has any questions, you can contact us in the mayor's office, and we're more than happy to help you out. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Director of law.
I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into the public portion of the meeting, we will start by asking, is Chris Smalley the director of the Wood County Parks District here? Who had requested time, seeing none, we'll move to the next one. We have Matt Summerfield and his team representing ODOT. If you'd like to take the dais, and I know you have a partial presentation on the television soon.
I also had a handout for you guys. Apologies, I'm Mrs. Fisher. I'm going to be doing most of the presentation, but Matt is also here.
You said Kim. Okay.
Thank you.
She's the brains of the operation here.
Thank you.
T-C-H-E-R, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, hello, everybody. Thank you for having us. I just want to give some, I guess, brief project history. I appreciate everything you've said so far. I feel like you covered the majority of what I was going to say. So hopefully this will be... Yeah, yeah, no, it was fantastic. So the project history, back in May of 2020, it's been around for a little bit. Back in May of 2020, Fostoria submitted a request to participate in the local safety study assistance program through ODOT. The initial concern was the intersection of South and Main. At that time, we decided to pursue a potential local safety study, which was kind of a new program for ODOT. As part of that study, Fostoria came forward with some more problem intersections, problem corridors. So we brought on a consultant, which was Barge Design Solutions, and they decided to take a look at where your highest injuries were, because even though, you know, we can try to study the entire city, but we still have a budget. So we have to, you know, try to focus our energy on the areas that we can impact the most. So that is how we wound up with looking at the County Line and South Street intersection, or South Street corridor, as well as the Main Street corridor. So in January of 2022, after the safety study was completed, we submitted a systemic safety application for improvements, which was then approved in May of 2022. We were requested to do some additional analysis and modeling, which took a significant amount of time. And then we came back here in December last year and presented our findings to the mayor and the safety services department. We recently had a field review and scoping meeting for the project, as well as we brought on a designer to do the design work for the project. So we're starting to get rolling. We know it's been a long process to get to this point, but we're ready to go. So at this point, we were asked to come before city council and kind of re-present it to you, because obviously it's been a minute. So, actually, I'm just going to hand it over to Chris.
So yeah, at this point, you know, there's been a lot of work done, but what we're about to start doing is spending federal dollars on the design of the work. And, you know, that's the point where we need an agreement from the city that lays out what our responsibilities are, what the city's responsibilities are. And then we start to work with the feds to make sure that we have things squared, a way to start spending federal dollars. And one of the requirements is, you know, once we start embarking upon this, if we choose to not do the project, then that money needs to be paid back. And that would need to be paid back by the city. So, you know, this is the time where we need to say, like, do we really want to do this? And this isn't us saying we have to do the project. This is us saying we think this is a good idea, and we have $2.2 million to do it with. So, you know, we're here to, you know, let you know what we recommend, but this isn't us saying you have to do the project. And, but this is safety funding. So we need to meet certain requirements to ensure we get the effect on the roadway that we intend to make it safer. So there are things that we, you know, will say, hey, this project needs to accomplish certain things. And when you think of a road diet, you know, sometimes, you know, that sounds scary, but, you know, we feel like we have the data to show that this is the right approach. So with that, I'll turn it back to Kim.
All right, so your first page here, if you can tell, it's kind of small. Your project limits, so we are looking at County Line from McCutcheonville Road up to the north, down to the tight turn where it turns onto South Street, and then it will end just before Wood Street. So those are the limits of the road diet. And then in addition, we also have a section on Main Street from South Street to North Street. So those are the extents of the project on both segments. We'll talk about Main Street first. I think that's the lesser of the two in terms of discussion. So for Main Street from south to north, we are removing the unwarranted signal at Main and Tiffin and converting that to always stop control. And then we'll also be installing permanent always stop signs for the other three intersections. So Main and South, Main and Center, and Main and North. And then installing new ADA curb ramps for that entire corridor, all four of those intersections. So not a lot of work over there, but it'll just, you know, make it look nicer, get it updated to current standards. The County Line Street and South Street is the bigger piece. So looking at the road diet within those limits that I just mentioned, so we'd be converting from a four-lane undivided roadway to a three-lane, which would be two lanes, two, three lanes each direction, one northbound, one southbound, with a center two-way left turn lane. And then we would have bike lanes on both sides. So a northbound bike lane and a southbound bike lane with a two-foot buffer in between the bike lanes and the three travel lanes. As far as that buffer goes between the bike lanes and the travel lanes, you know, there's talk of delineators, you know, try to make the bicyclists feel safer with a delineator, but obviously then you run into issues with maintenance. How do you get snowplows into that area? How do you get street sweepers into that area? So it's something to consider, it's an option. Or you can just paint it and continue to maintain it the same way you maintain it right now. On the next page, I guess that's the third page, you do have a rough graphic of what that would look like with the two lanes in each direction, the center two-way left turn lane and the bike lanes on each side. So included with this project, we'd also be removing the unwarranted signals. So the intersection of South and Union would go to stop control on Union Street. That would not be an always stop. That would be, traffic on South Street would continue moving, the traffic on Union Street would have to stop, and then enter traffic. The intersection of County Line and North would be converted to an always stop. So that means all four directions are going to stop. The intersection of County Line and Fremont would go to stop control on Fremont only. So County Line would continue to move. And then County Line and McCutcheonville would be converted to an always stop. So all three legs of that intersection would stop. The project would also include installation of ADA curb ramps along the corridor, similar to the other section of the project, replacement of the existing concrete pavement that's located at this major curve, which that concrete's needed because of the slow-moving trucks that pass over that piece of roadway. We'd also look at resurfacing County Line from South Street to McCutcheonville Road. That has been resurfaced not too insanely long ago. So that would just be like a one-course mill and fill. And then resurfacing South Street from that turn to Wood Street, which would be a two-course mill and fill. We would also look at signal timings, at a signal timing study for the corridor to determine optimized timings. So we want to make sure that traffic is moving as smoothly as possible through the corridor. So that's why we would do a signal timing study to figure out what those optimized timings are for each of those signals. And then that would come back to the city to make sure that you maintain those timings. That way, you're getting the full benefit of the road diet. You know, if you keep having to go through the corridor and you're stopping at every single red light, you're not going to see the full benefits of the road diets. You want to make sure that you keep the timings up to date in the cabinet. That is the bulk of that aspect of my presentation. I do have several, maybe more pages of like analysis, graphs, that kind of stuff. So this first one here shows your delay throughout the corridor. The biggest things that I wanted to mention here, the black dotted line is your existing. The red line is your final optimized. So you can tell that it really doesn't change too much. The biggest things would be the intersections of 189 and North Street. Since they'd be changing to always stop control, obviously you'd have some additional delay. People are going to be waiting a little bit longer at those intersections because you're all going to have to stop now, as opposed to possibly moving through it free flow when it was a signal before. Also, we did want to point out that those intersections, it could be a little bit higher than what's shown on there, just because it's going to take time for people to adjust to that being an always stop control. You're going to have some additional hesitation from people when they pull up to an always stop because they're not 100% sure, is it my turn to go, is it somebody else's turn to go? So that's just something else to keep in mind. You'll notice that Elm Street has the biggest peak there in terms of delay. We do think there's room for improvement at Elm Street. Right now, it's split phasing, which means that, you know, northbound traffic goes and then southbound traffic goes. You know, if there's an opportunity for us to change that to where both directions of traffic can go at the same time and then have the left turns overlap, we're not sure if that's a geometric reason or what the reasoning is behind that today. But if we can alter that to make it better, we can possibly improve that spike at Elm Street as well. So that'd be something that we could look into once we get further into the design. Crash data, there's several pages of crash data here. So from 2017 through 2024, I pulled this data back in October before the December meeting. You guys had had a total of 308 total crashes on the corridor, with about 26% of them being injuries and with one fatal. 63% of those crashes were happening at four-way intersections. 17% were side swipe passing, which could be attributed to having two lanes in each direction. So traffic is just, you know, kind of tight through there. Nothing overly crazy about the crash data, but it's there in case you guys want to look through it. On this last page here, I will point out this very bottom picture. This was from our central office, DSRTE, which is our district safety review team that's for the entire state. They did look at some other locations that have implemented road diets. On the bottom left there, it shows average total crashes decreased over six sites by 13%. Average injury crashes decreased by 10%, and then average left turn angles decreased by 38%. And then we've also seen reductions in speed differential. So theoretically, you want everybody kind of traveling at the same speed through the corridor. Once you have people that are traveling, you know, 45 and 25, you know, you don't want to have that huge speed differential between people. You have a higher propensity for crashes. So they were seeing reductions between 15% and 30% in speed differential with the implementation of the road diet. So that's really great to see as well. So that is the bulk of this aspect of my presentation. I also have the model, which I would like to share. I don't really have anything specific with the model. It's more so, I know that I should, this was the mayor before. It's more so if you guys want to look at a specific intersection or a specific aspect of the corridor. I can kind of show you how it's running. So this is the, I'm going to focus on the PM because the PM has more traffic than the AM. So this is the PM peak, and this is the optimized solution. So this is using those optimized signal timings that we were talking about.
So really quick, could you just kind of share kind of what the basis of the model is? So we did traffic counts and this, yeah.
So we do traffic counts, and then we use those traffic counts first to figure out if signals are warranted. That's how we determined which signals were not warranted. Let me speed this up, otherwise we're going to say it forever. This is Elm Street, Elm Street's got a problem child. So we collected the traffic count data, and then we used that traffic count data to determine which signals are warranted, which is how we determined that four of the signals were not warranted. And then we can also use that data to figure out where your peak hours are. So your AM peak is on my paper, I think it's like 7:00 to 8:00 AM. And then your PM peak is three to four. So then we use the volume data for those specific hours to plug into the software to see what it looks like in the worst-case scenario. So this is the PM peak in the worst-case scenario. This is what your traffic looks like at these intersections. So theoretically, however bad this would back up here, theoretically, the other 22 hours of the day, you're not going to see those kinds of backups.
So what you're looking at now is a model of kind of how things work today?
Well, this is how things work with the proposed road diet.
Oh, yeah, with the, okay, sorry, I couldn't see that far.
Sorry, it's tiny, I'm sorry. But if you guys have a different intersection that you want to look at, in all honesty, for the most part, looking through this, everything runs relatively smoothly. So I can show you whatever intersection you want, you know. We can sit here and stare at it for as long as you want. You can see the traffic, you know, backs up a decent amount here, but it pretty much thickly is out.
Steve, I see we're installing bike lanes, I don't see any bikes.
Yeah, the software isn't capable of putting in the bike lanes.
Do we have to have bike lanes?
We have to have something. We did talk to, so our, I guess, counterpart out of Columbus, he's in charge of like us having the funding. So we did go back to them because I know that it was discussion of whether or not we could remove the bike lanes from the project because out of fear of having, you know, bike lanes next to semi trucks. It's concerning, we understand that concern. He didn't say that he would pull funding if we didn't use the bike lanes, but he said that we need something to encourage people to slow down. So whether that's parking, you have the option of putting in parking instead of bike lanes. You could theoretically do some kind of like a bump out in the corridor. Unfortunately, in terms of cost to do like concrete bump outs along the entire corridor is going to just blow the budget wide open.
Is, are the sidewalks getting redone?
They are not, no.
Can you remind me again, what timeframe you were studying these? I mean, you said you identified the two times during the day where the traffic is the heaviest. And then that's what you based your study upon. What were those timeframes again?
So the PM peak hour is from three to four.
And that's based upon the traffic on County Line?
And the cross-section, and the intersection.
Three to four, and what was the morning time?
7:15 to 8:15, seven to eight, it's one of those two.
I just have concerns because that's, I don't know about the afternoon time. That's when we're going to talk about school release. And you're going to have a lot of traffic coming up from either Elm or Park. And that can already be difficult. Removing that signal really concerns me. I...
Elm and Park will stay, the signal to Elm and Park will stay.
Oh, those both stay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize. Elm and Park stay, and then also Columbus, and also stay.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I didn't understand that from your handout here, so I appreciate the correction.
And what about McCutcheonville Road?
McCutcheonville would go to always stop. So all three legs of that intersection would stop.
Can you move the map to that intersection? Because it's, there's like essentially three roads there.
And two highways.
And a side street, boost lanes.
A lot of truck traffic.
And the North Street one? Because that's going to be going to a four-way. Correct.
Yep.
The reason some were made two-way stops and some were four-way stops.
So when you remove a signal, the first option would be to go to a two-way stop. When we brought that up in December, I know the mayor had some concerns with making those two-way stops, as well as the safety services director. So they asked us to go back and look at other options as far as beyond just the two-way stop, because they did mention the truck traffic at those two intersections. So we actually went out and we did, there's warrants to meet always stop control.
Okay.
So we ran those warrants, and actually the...
They qualify?
They do qualify, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So I almost feel like County Line should just keep us an even flow there and from having to stop, but...
Well, I definitely, when they brought up the trucks coming off of North Street, like for you to find a gap there for semi trucks, find a gap there, it's going to be difficult. So I definitely understand the concern behind that. Same thing with up at 189, trying to find a gap in that traffic could be difficult.
Okay.
I never thought I'd ask this question. It's about roundabouts. And I can point different places out within 40 miles of Fostoria that I think it's nothing but a waste of taxpayer money and a big joke. But when we're talking out there at the intersection of 23, 199 County Line Street, is that maybe a really realistic use of a roundabout?
I know you have the gas station very close right there.
Yeah.
So the gas station would concern me a little bit. You do have some space over here, which could help. How much do you like your property owners around here?
Yeah, it would be a pretty invasive project in terms of right-of-way.
Speaking of which, like, what's, how long does it take to complete the project? And what kind of obstacles do we face with traffic while it's being completed?
For the, going back to the road?
I'm sorry, for the whole project, if we were to be forward with it.
Yeah, right? Yeah, I think we foresee construction of this, I think in like 2028, I think. Maybe 2027 if things go quickly. But, you know, it takes a while to develop something of this size. And just the federal aid process takes some time to work through. So we would foresee the construction in 2027 or 2028.
But the timeframe to complete it once it began?
Oh, like how many, like how many months?
Yeah.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Probably just be a season.
Okay.
If I might get back to...
I agree.
Get back to how well I like the property owners.
Sorry, that's not how I should put that. I just mean it's kind of...
Just for the record, I have compassion for the property owners, but I'm looking out for the best interest of this community, just to make sure that we all understand each other.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. It can just be difficult to buy property from people in an area like this. You have to take into account that kind of cost. It's one of the things that we think about when we look at locations for a new roundabout. Of course, we're thinking about safety. We're also thinking about a price tag because we have to go to central office and request funding for a roundabout. And we have to have, you know, we have to be under a certain dollar to even try to apply, and we have to be competitive. So we know that we're about to buy a gas station and, I'm not sure what's over here. It's a little ice cream shop, isn't it? So by the time you buy all of these properties to try to make that roundabout work, are you adding $2 million to a $3 million roundabout? You might not even be below the cap for...
Why not get creative?
You can try, I'm not saying you can't try.
Build the roundabout around the gas station out there.
We can get creative and create, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that.
No.
I don't, I'm not opposed to looking into it.
No, I'm being a little bit facetious there, but I'm just looking at risk versus reward as far as what we might accomplish, as far as really promoting a more fluid movement of vehicles in and out of Fostoria, particularly at that end.
I love roundabouts, I'll put them wherever you want me to put them at. You want to put a roundabout there, I'll try, I'll try.
And we're talking about basically just surface stuff. There won't be any more separation of storm and drainage down through there than what's already been done?
Or if it's needed, our service department would do the work.
That intersection concerns me as well, just because there's... That intersection concerns me as well, just because there's such a hub for, for truck traffic. And I, I had wondered what you use to determine that a signal was no longer warranted and you indicated that that's traffic count data. So, could you tell me what the metric is that you use to determine from that data what makes it unwarranted?
We actually use, it's the MUTCD, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It has several metrics that you use to determine. And it's based off of your count volume. So, there's a eight-hour count volume that you can, they're all warrants. There's an eight-hour warrant, there's a four-hour warrant, there's a peak hour warrant. There's also crash warrants that you can apply through. But this didn't meet any of our warrants for that intersection.
None, none of them.
And the warrants are just the eight-hour volume warrant, it's literally just a number. If it's, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, but if it's three hundred cars on county line every hour and a hundred and fifty cars on 189 every hour, those are not perfect numbers, don't quote me. But there's a number of cars, you literally have to go through the car, through the intersection within an hour.
And the proposal is basically take it or leave it. So, because as I understand, if we adopt and sign the agreement, we're now committed, it's a commitment.
It's a commitment to follow through on the project or repay the money spent, you know.
On this analysis and all that?
On the design point forward. What's been, what's been done so far, you know, that's not something we're going to look for you to repay us for. If you decide you don't want to do this, this is just us trying to be a good partner and kind of bring ideas. And, you know, may, may feel a little bit like we're here saying like, this is the project, yes or no. But, you know, there's been kind of been five years of work to get to this point where we have kind of looked through a lot of options and tried to kind of make things as workable as possible. And this is the outcome of, of a lot of work. Not just kind of us saying, hey, is it, either you want it or you don't. You know, we've, we've tried to, as best we can, taken to account all the feedback we've received from the city while still, you know, making the funding manager who kind of signs the check feel like we're doing the things with his funding that, that's what the Federal Highway Administration intends for that funding to do.
I just got a question for everybody in here. Who would ride their bike on that bike lane with those semis right beside you? Anybody raise their hand? Uh, you got a death wish. I, I, that, you got to figure out something different there, right?
Bob, our alternative there is to have parking on one side of the street and we don't think that would be a good alternative.
Yeah. In a perfect world, you know, we would move the curbs in, but that gets very expensive and we don't have the money and the budget for, for that. And we assume the city isn't looking to kind of self-fund that.
The sidewalks on county line from that whole thing aren't too bad.
No.
So-
But, but the other thing you could do is you could put bike lanes one direction on, on Union Street and one direction on Main Street. And a lot of the bikers, once they figured that out, would avoid this section of County Line Street.
I would, I would, I drive a semi sometimes. I know Greg has drove-
That's scary, we know that.
I, you need all that, sometimes you need all that room and if, you're not going to see a bike coming up beside you usually. And they're not watching out half the time where they're going. So, I, I know there's a bike lane on fifty-three in Tiffin, south of, I think it's Market, that runs from there clear out to two-twenty-four. I have never, ever seen a bike on that street. They're on the sidewalk, but the bike lanes there, it's marked out, but never seen a bike on there. I just think it's a waste.
I think it's concerning because it's a route to school. So, if we don't feel that it's safe and we have a child using that lane to get to school, I don't feel good about that.
I mean, one side of county line or the other, I think the sidewalks are pretty nice all the way in that whole corridor from South Street clear up to McCutcheonville. There may be a few pieces that aren't so great, but maybe that we can improve on, but to, to stick a bike lane in there on both sides, oh my goodness. I'd-
Are there-
I wouldn't want my grandkids riding on it.
Seems to me like it'd be workable as long as there is a some, something that would, to a certain degree, from a physical as well as a visual standpoint, separate your traffic lane from your bike lane.
Which the option is there for delineators, but like I mentioned before, it's going to be an issue with snowplows. You're going to hit them, you're going to clean them, it's going to be a-
Yeah.
Now, that-
It would actually be our, our recommendation is to have those there because you're right, that is the safest thing to do. But if, but again, trying to accommodate kind of what's workable for the city, you know, like we can probably get away with not doing it, but the safer thing to do would be to include them. And so, you know, we, we kind of-
Well, I, I'm just looking at the, the picture and I don't see any delineation there. I just see some, I just see some paint.
Is, is there any way of putting any kind of a some type of post-up or something that would, every so many feet that would kind of identify it without complicating plowing snow?
One, one of the challenges, as soon as you do all of that type of stuff to delineate the difference there, then all of a sudden, your street department has all sorts of problems when they try to plow the streets or run the, uh, run the street cleaner and things like that. It makes it very, very difficult. So, you're trying to consider the maintenance and everything else that goes into it.
Are there any other options? I know you said the third option was out of budget, but what, what have other people done in instance on like this where it's so busy? I mean, I just, I, I agree, I can't fathom putting a bike lane there. Not that I think anybody would use it, but like Sue said, so many kids use, you know, if there's a bike lane there and a kid makes a decision to hop on a bike and get on county line because they don't know any different and somebody doesn't see them, I mean, yeah, that-
Can you put it on one side?
It worries us.
Have them run parallel next to each other on one side? Like have two bike lanes run next to each other on one side?
About just one on one side?
So, then the issue becomes you're going to have people that might want to use it both directions. So, then traffic that's trying to pull out and enter onto the intersection, they're not going to be looking that direction for a bike. They're not going to be expecting a bicyclist coming from that direction. Plus, then you run into an issue with the bicyclist once they, let's say you're heading northbound from the bike lane and you want to get to the south side or you want to turn to the left. How do you safely make that maneuver at that point?
Is there any studies out from different communities where they monitor or track volumes of bicycles? I guess when, and I know that some communities, if you got a college or something, you're going to probably have a tremendous amount of bike volume. Realistically, here in Fosse Story, how many bikes are going to use it? I mean, really?
Yeah, the, the, the reasoning for including the bike lanes isn't necessarily because we saw an abundance of cyclists. It's to have the narrowing effect on the roadway to make the drivers feel like they need to drive more slowly on the corridor. So, we need something to squeeze down the road, make the drivers feel like they can't fly down this roadway. So, it could be on-street parking, it could be, you know, moving the curb line, it could be bump outs at the intersections for pedestrians. You know, the bike lanes are just kind of, along with parking, are the two that just require paint. And the, and the other ones require more than investment. And so, you know, if, if the city wants to make that investment, we're all for it. But kind of the, you know, we're, we're trying to help you manage your budget and show you what the options are that are within the budget. But, you know, if the city would like to do more, we're all for it. It's just, you know, we're, we're limited on the funding that we can bring.
I'm, I'm still thinking that if you put them on one side and move everything over, you're still going to have the corridor squeezed down, like you said, that's supposedly supposed to slow down traffic. And then it's wide enough that the city could easily get the snow off of it. It could easily get the street sweeper down there, that type of thing.
I apologize if you covered this because I do appreciate all your work on this. Maybe I missed this component, but I'm just thinking, so we're, we're going from four lanes out on county line to two and a turn. Does that behoove us as a community? I just, I'm not sure how that behooves us. Of course, this is not my area, this is your area of expertise, I, I understand that, but-
Do you want it to feel like a drag strip with four lanes of traffic lined down county line? Or do you want it to feel more pet-friendly, more bike-friendly, more convenient?
Okay.
Where you only have two lanes each direction, a comfortable center left turn lane to turn instead of sitting in that left turn lane and being-
That's what this is about, okay.
So, it's just, I think it's, it's what Fosse Story is comfortable with. If you guys are comfortable with how things are right now, then that's fine. Like, I won't lose sleep over it later.
Gotcha.
But if you guys want to try to make it a more comfortable community feel and make safe, make spaces safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, like this is a good opportunity to do it.
Reduce your crashes, reduce your injuries, you know, that's, that's the reason for doing it.
Well, thanks, thanks for answering that question.
Is there any research done when this is done somewhere like this? How many bicycle accidents we have with vehicles? You're saying we're going to eliminate vehicle, vehicle-to-vehicle accidents, but if we open it up for bicycles, do you have any research on that? Okay. I think that would be beneficial.
I don't want to put the police chief on the spot. I, I, I really think that-
You have a strong opinion?
Law enforcement's a major component of some of this. And I'm, I'm open to any thoughts that you have, Roger Gabe.
I agree that there shouldn't be bike lanes on the side. But I think there's an approach that kind of combines it all together to narrow it down. Extending each side is lanes that are painted that can have the travel, that provide us a lot of safety, that can trap stops. If you have a balance trap to stop on county line where it's four lanes, what's the cars going behind you when you're trying to deal with people who are not cooperating is kind of scary. This provides us a little off-road access when people over or if we have a car break down. We keep it two lanes, we leave extended sides instead of immediate bike lanes that are painted so that we can pull over and do our stuff, get back on traffic, but two lanes.
So, it would just have the lines in it? Is that allowable with your plan?
I can ask the question though. I just question if anybody would-
It's a compromise that creates a lot for safety.
Yes. It just seems to me this is about safety. And that's our concern as well. I'm only, I guess I should only speak for myself, that's my concern as well, so-
We look at it like it is-
Yes.
I've got a question for the fire chief too. You spend a lot of time running those trucks up and down county line. Any thoughts from your perspective?
Yeah, there are some concerns. It has a pipeline for us too. I mean, I know that we can handle the changes that do come with it. I would say some of our, our bad accidents, our kids darting out on the county line street and stuff like that in between traffic and, we do have some, in my opinion, some issues at some of the intersections, especially the lights, whether it's the timing, directional changes, just, there's some of them that just cause chaos. Elm and County Line Street is always going to be tough just because of the fact the hospital, I mean, for us, that's, you know, a main pipeline for us, for sure. That's where that traffic gets congested or anything else. But Gabe is correct by saying that when you are out there on those accidents, it is, it's crazy. You don't realize how much traffic's what we do have down County Line Street until you're out there on it. You know, I mean, prior to the, the paving we had here, you know, it was right before that occurred, when you were out there, there was divots that are a foot deep because of the traffic at the intersection. Mainly because the semi's stopping and pushing the asphalt, but, and that just aided to the, you know, potential for crashes.
Then pull-off areas would provide us with a little bit of certainty that people have somewhere to go to get out of our way instead of-
Well, that, he's going to need room for folks to pull off so the fire truck can-
We were able to pave those on the side and use some bike lanes.
Which is another reason for no bike lane.
When you see those big trucks parked kind of on an angle for a reason. Sometimes people get mad at us because it's a block traffic so that we don't get, you know, struck.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Or we do it offense in cars so it doesn't go against where we're at in the sense that we go.
Yeah, the big red truck take the long one. We'll pay for it later.
So, I think we can do our best to relay that to the funding manager. You know, I think his initial feedback to our district was, you know, it needs to be more than just paint. But I think, you know, that's, you know, I can appreciate what you're saying. So, I think we'll do our best to kind of raise that up and the reasons why. And we can see what we can do.
I think we probably just need to load him up before he makes a decision. Have a little meeting with those two guys and the mayor and the safety service director and have him try and ride a bike in that outside lane down county line.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be gone.
Yeah.
You know, I- Yeah, I like, I like the way it's going to help traffic flow, but, um-
We understand the concerns.
Yeah, I think the concern with the paint is, you know, will drivers, you know, feel that need to slow down if it's, if it's just paint? You know, there's-
Drive over it.
Yeah.
Or it's going to go faster in that direction.
Are we going to get the outcomes that we're looking for?
Well, we do have a police department here who will issue tickets. If they're not in the lane they're supposed to be in. So, I think there's other ways of controlling it. Paint's probably the best and bike path is probably not.
We can ask the question?
Yeah.
What are we looking at as far as cost on this?
Uh, it would not cost anything to the city of Fosse Story.
As long as we maintain in the current budget, you know, so right now, I think we have two-point-two-eight-five million for the project. I think that's roughly half million for the design, roughly, and the remainder in construction. One hundred percent funded through ODOT, up to that amount. You know, if the construction were to exceed that cost, you know, we would do our best to find additional money. But, you know, there's no guarantee, you know, that kind of depends on the fiscal situation at the time for the program. So, one of the things in the agreement is, you know, like the city is committing to fund the project up and above, you know, if, if we exceed the cap, you know, then the city would need to step in and fund whatever else we need if we're not able to get additional funding. But we do everything we could do to find additional funding.
Is this state dollars or federal?
So, it's federal dollars that pass through this state.
So, generally with those, we need to upfront the cost and then we're reimbursed. Usually with federal dollars, that's the way it flows. Are we assured this federal funding is going to be available when we go to collect?
Yeah, soon.
Just going to be on the, on the ticket for, we've spent the money and then, and then it's no longer- Just gonna be on the, on the ticket for, we've spent the money and then, and then it's no longer available?
So I guess two things there. So when we do a project with a local, and there's local funding required, so let's say that, you know, we receive our bids and, you know, we have roughly 1.8 million for construction and it's 1.9 million. Then we would request $100,000 from the city prior to starting the construction of the project. But that 1.8 million, you know, like, we don't need that from you. That's, that's funding that we'll take care of on our side. So you don't need to front the money for the federal part of the project.
All right.
So, but then it's...
Of course, something would happen at the federal, we know what's happening at the federal level. And, and sometimes, you know, cutbacks are being made. And my concern is if we have to upfront the money and then they pull the plug on the program, does that leave us holding the bag on it?
Yeah, my understanding is that this funding is settled. You know, it's, it's already been through the process where the funds get distributed to states. It's formula funding to the state. It's not a discretionary grant that the executive branch could unilaterally kind of change. It's through the appropriations process. So again, not an expert on that and no crystal ball, but everything I've been told is this is safe funding.
I'm not the first person to ask that question.
No, no.
Last month.
Yeah.
Question, can I run my golf cart down that bike path?
My, I'll, I'll let law enforcement speak to it. Yeah, it's a state route.
He's back there shaking his head, so just, just checking, I mean, it's... Nice lined off space down through there, you know?
Any other questions for us? These are all really good questions. But we've appreciated the partnership from the city, you know. We just finished a resurfacing job on 23, on the mid-block underpass last year, and we're about to start another one with the city this year, and we have another one in the future. So inclusive of this project, you know, we have approximately 5.6 million dollars worth of ODOT funding over the next five years for projects. So I look forward to continuing the relationship. And if there's any questions about this, let us know. We want this to work for the city. And we will follow up on just trying to paint the lane out, see if we can pass muster with that, and we will follow up.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate the discussion. We have two more people on the requested public speaking time. We have Ben Pooley at the request of the mayor and safety service director to speak to us about the airport grant that's on the agenda tonight.
It is transportation day for you guys, so we're, we're talking about airplanes, not cars now. So my name is Ben Cooley with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly. I'm consulting engineers for the airport, have been for many years. And I was asked to come to just quickly give you the quick summary. Definitely can ask any questions or whatever, but, you know, current status out at the airport and the reason for the, the legislation today. The airport, I don't know if anyone's been out there recently, but we are, we have broken ground on the, the new terminal or the expansion to the existing hangar that was constructed a couple of years ago out there. So there is growth and improvements happening at the, at the airport right now. That terminal funding has already been appropriated and is, and is underway. And there's, so there is new improvements happening out at the airport. What's coming next is now what we're asking for. There's some federal money out there, FAA funds available, as well as some ODOT competitive grant funding that is available. That's the piece where we need the, the approval to submit an application for those funds. It doesn't guarantee funds, it doesn't sort of lock you into spending anything now. It is just the approval to apply for funds to see if ODOT Aviation could fund some of the navigation aids, the replacement of some existing equipment that of course is 25 years old or more out at the airport that has just reached the end of its useful life. So that's kind of the, the quick summary of, of what that ODOT funding, the, the legislation today would go towards. Those, those applications are, are due and we just need to follow up with the, the approval to apply for those funds. But beyond that federally, with the FAA, we're seeking some funds. The applications for those have gone in already. But to do some pavement rehab work as well as some additional lighting improvements. So the runway and the taxiway both have edge lighting that go all the way up and down the runway and taxiway. And all of that electrical equipment goes back to the old terminal building. And right now, because of the hangar that burned down years ago, they just sit in kind of a breezeway that gets locked and that's, that's the electrical vault. And so we need to fix that long-term and move those into a more weather tight sort of building. And so all of that is design funding and then future construction funding, but those applications have gone in. And the federal government, we believe, is still solvent enough to pay for those grants. But once again, you're not, you know, we haven't taken bids, we haven't done anything with that yet. That is just the grants that are coming in order to start doing work on some of that sort of equipment out there. So that's the, the very short and sweet thing. We have lots of plans and ideas after that, years down the line, but those are the immediate sort of projects out at the airport.
You're talking about lights, pavement issues on the runways. While that's being done, the thing that came to my mind, are we, do we have a satisfactory length of runway?
Yes.
I know airplanes have changed since that airport was built. It's not necessary, it would not be prudent to extend the runway length?
Greg, our runway is 5,000 feet. Tiffin's, Seneca County Airport is 4,000 feet. They're in the, they're in the process of trying to stretch theirs 5,000 to get to where we are. So we're, we're in very good shape. We can handle jets, small jets. And I think the other thing that's critical here, Ben, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't, if we don't make this application, we in, in essence are gonna skip a year and we're gonna lose the opportunity for these funds. And I think it's really critical that we continually improve our airport. Our airport is, is a satellite airport for Bowling Green State University. They do touch-and-go landings here every day. So it's an opportunity for us to grow an economic development opportunity for us, for the city of Fostoria. We really have a very nice airport. We just need to continue to improve upon it.
Correct, yep. That, that's kind of the, the long and short of the story is that the, the terminal building was, I think, 70-plus years old. The equipment is 20, 25, 30 years old. It is, the, the overall, the pavement is in pretty, pretty decent shape out there. We have to do some last bits of apron and taxiway rehabs coming up, but the majority of it is in really good shape. It's that other infrastructure, the, the buildings, as well as the, the electrical vault equipment that it's time for those to come, come do for replacement. And yeah, you got a, you got a great asset out there for sure. And it's not just Bowling Green, there's, you know, corporate pilot, corporate corporations that fly in, as well as just the general flying public utilize that asset all the time.
Do we collect fees out there? Do we collect fees out there for its usage?
There is no landing fee.
There's no landing fees. We do, we, we are now capable of selling fuel, both jet fuel and air fuel.
Okay.
We also do get some revenue for hangar rentals. I think we currently have eight hangars out there that have tenants in them.
Okay, we have eight?
Yes.
And how many do we have available? Are they all?
Open.
Okay.
Don't quote me on that.
I think there's close to eight more available.
Okay.
We have two buildings, one's full, one's empty.
So as it becomes more desirable, there's the potential that we could fill those?
Yes, so we actually just opened up fuel sales to the public last week. That's how new it is, and, you know, we've already been making sales. That will kind of highlight our airport for pilots to stop in because now we have fuel available. I mean, we, I think we gave up on a lot of revenue because we just, we didn't have, we haven't had fuel since, I think.
Is, is that, that's a self-serve fuel facility?
We also have a co-op students. We have a co-op program out there with BGSU aviation major. And we have those guys out there. And Chuck Anderson actually lives on site too. So we are really trying to engage those students with the public. So if somebody does land during normal business hours, they're going out there, they're greeting these pilots, helping them if they need any help with pumping their fuel, taking payments. But it is self-serve.
Card troll.
Yeah, they have both options.
Thanks, that was really informative. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Next on the public agenda is Deb Tyson.
Hey, Deb Tyson. I just wanted to compliment everyone that's been helpful. Hasn't always been that way, but currently who we have before us, both administration and council, are very helpful people because you can set an appointment with anybody. You can meet with them. I think it's important for the public to show up. I have one sad bit of news. I went to the EPA meeting and there were only 26 people in attendance total, and half of them were either EPA or wind waste with the Vision Ring people. And that is very sad. We did have a council member there, we did have commissioner there, and that was good. But everybody wants to complain as far as the public goes, but they don't show up. People can show up here and not speak, and that would be fine. They can talk to somebody before or after. But I just met with somebody in administration before the meeting and got all my problems resolved instead of bringing them out here and going on YouTube and airing whatever. And I strongly would promote that. I'm looking forward to the council convoice meeting. I believe that's in June. And I strongly urge those that aren't here today to show up to that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. We will now open up the public portion to anyone else who is not on the agenda that wishes to speak. We just ask that you state your name for the record, your address if you're comfortable doing so, and limit your time to three minutes.
My first meeting ever here. My name is Patty Gregg. I'm the president of the Fostoria Women's Club. I'm here today because of the alley that runs by the women's club. It's a danger. It runs from South Street to Jackson Street. And the cars come flying through there, they don't, there's no speed limit there. If there is, it's not showing. And nobody ever stops for the stop sign at the end of the street. They just slow down and keep on going. We've had a couple of women who are in walkers and almost got hit. Something has to be done about it. We would like to have it closed just past our driveway where we turn into our lots. And it's possible, that's what we'd like to have done, because it's a danger. And I know that some of the police officers complain about it because the people from the bars on Friday and Saturday night go run right through there. And we have, we have meetings in there and parties in there in the evening. And it's not good if somebody's leaving the club there and going across and somebody's flying through there. So that's why I'm here to complain about that. And I mean, we've been there for over 100 years. Matter of fact, this month, the Fostoria Women's Club is celebrating 100 years. But it's gotten worse. And I've been there 15 years. It's gotten worse in the last two or three years than it's ever been. It's almost like a runway there. So I think something should be done about it, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Patty.
Patty, I've had, I've had several women complain to me about it. Each one, I have asked them to write us a letter making a formal request to close that alley. We need that formal request so that we can take it to law and order, and then we can get that alley closed for you.
Okay, we can do that.
I would really like to have a written letter stating that, that the women's club would like to have that closed.
Oh, we definitely would. And right past where our, where we come in and out of our driveway there, right into the alley, is where we'd like it closed, right past that. So we can still get in and out of there because we do a lot of coming in there and going up there and dropping stuff off. So we need the access to our, to that part.
Yep.
But we will get that done for you. And who should we give that to? You?
Please.
I'll just send it in the mail to you then.
That, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will work with you then to coordinate on where we close and what we do.
Yes, yes. I, I have it already up here where, when it closes, so...
Very good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Gonzalez. I live at 808 West Center Street here in Fostoria. And I'm here to find out some information on the cat issue, the feral cat. We live down there and we have what started out to be one, two. People are feeding them. It's turned into 20 cats. I have pictures of them if you would like to see them. The side of my house is nothing but a cat litter box. Both my husband and I both have health issues, and that kind of stuff is not good for us. I have pictures of the side of my house. When I got COVID that last, back a few years ago, it's really hurt my lungs where I, I had to even quit work. So they're getting up underneath our cars, they're tearing down the, the protective hood, and they're getting up in the motors of our cars. I have a little reading area I can't even sit in because the smell is so bad. If filters in the house, we can't even have windows open on the, the west side of our house because of the smell is so bad. If anybody wants to come down, I'll be more than happy to show you that they're using between our garage and the fence area, they're using that as a litter box. They're using the house on, on where the neighbor, the neighbor feeds the cats and feeds a lot. We have possums, we have raccoons now because of the overfeeding. The person that I really feeds them all the time, every single day, a ton of cat food, he does not even live in that house. The house has been empty for eight years. He gets in his car and he goes up the street while we have to put up with the cat crap and everything else. I don't know if there's anything that we can do about it, if there's anything in place. What are my options? What can I do? I know you can't take them to the Humane Society because they're totally full. I know that you can't rehome them or you take them someplace and drop them off someplace else. I know that you can't be mean to them, and I don't want to be, you know, that, that kind of a person, but there's got to be something done. Whether, I know that other cities and towns around here have different things in place where they're not allowed to feed them or be fined, they're not allowed to make cat shelters, or there's just a lot of different options I've been reading. But my, I guess I need something done. I've actually seen four different cats out there pregnant, and if each one of them has four or five, we are really gonna be overrun with that. So I guess in a nutshell, that's about what I've got to say. What are my options? What can I do? What can we do? Because I don't see the problem getting any better if something isn't done. I mean, there isn't laws in place or something isn't done. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your time. Any other members of the public wish to address counsel? All right, we'll move into old business then. The first item on old businesses continues to be tabled, so we move into the second item of old business.
A resolution determining the disposition of interest earned by the city of Australia on various investments, specifically water and sewer accounts.
Move to adopt.
Agreed.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Cassidy to adopt this resolution. Clerk, what'd you call the role, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Lake?
Yes.
That resolution carries. It is 2025-31.
In ordinance, amending section 1501.01 of the codified order...
An ordinance amending section 1501.01 of the codified ordinances of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled adoption relating to the Ohio Fire Code.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance declaring the Director of Law to be the designee for all members of the City Council and the mayor for purposes of compliance with sections 109.43 and 149.43 and other sections of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring emergency to exist.
That was the second reading of that ordinance and that concludes old business. We will now move into new business.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the General Fund and Parks and Rec Fund and transferring funds from the General Fund to the Parks and Rec Fund and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Podak to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Good app.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Cassidy to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That ordinance passes, it's ordinance number 2025-32.
We're on new, right?
Yeah, we're on the second piece of new business, the Park and Rec Fund advance.
An ordinance entitled an ordinance, entitled an ordinance authorizing an advance to the Park and Recreation Fund with such advance to be repaid before year end 2025 and declaring emergency.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Mendoza to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Good app. Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Right, that is, becomes ordinance number 2025-33. It's okay. Thank you.
An ordinance amending section 951.03 of the codified ordinances of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled regulations for use of boats and watercraft on reservoirs to permit water department use.
That is the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 951.05 of the codified ordinances of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled recreational activities at parks and reservoirs to remove reference to the municipal swimming pool.
That is the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 951.07 of the codified ordinances of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled waterfowl hunting at Fosteria Reservoirs 5 and 6 to remove reference to Parks and Recreation Director.
That was the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 951.08 of the codified ordinances of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled group usage of city parks and recreational activities to remove authorization for alcoholic beverages and remove reference to previous Meadowlark Park lease.
That is the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 955.06 of the codified ordinances of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled hours open to exclude funerals and burials on Sundays.
That is the first reading of that ordinance.
And a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety on behalf of the City of Fosteria, Ohio to make application to the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation for an Ohio Airport Improvement Program Grant for the SFY 2026 and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Podak, a second by Lake to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Good app.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Cassidy to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Right, that does carry, it's resolution number 2025-34. The final piece of new business this evening.
An ordinance granting consent to the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio and authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, here and after referred to as the local public agency, LPA, to enter into contracts with the Director of Transportation necessary to complete described road diet projects and declaring emergency to exist.
That was the first reading of that ordinance. That concludes our new business this evening, is there a need to go into executive session?
Miscellaneous.
We'll do it after you make the motion.
Yes, there is. We would like to move into executive session for personnel matters specifically to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official.
To my knowledge, it would be no business to follow. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Podak to go into executive session for the items listed. We will do miscellaneous business before we go into executive session as there will be no business to follow. Clerk, would you call the roll for that executive session?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, that motion does carry. We will announce the time for executive session after miscellaneous business is over. I will kick off the miscellaneous business just to remind people if you haven't done so. As council members and other elected officials, we have our ethics disclosure that needs to be done by May 15th, which will happen before the next meeting. So make sure you do that or else you can face hefty fines by the state of Ohio. So I'm more saying this out loud to remind myself to make sure I do it. And does anyone else have any miscellaneous business?
I do, Mr. President. I've prepared something that I wanted to share with council and the administration. So please excuse my, my reading, I wanted to put a lot of thought into this so I touched all the targets and made sure my tone was as I had hoped it would be. One of my hopes when I joined City Council was to see improved communication with our residents. Over the past few weeks, I've taken time to reflect and I'm happy to say we've made meaningful progress. We've built on the foundation of recorded meetings on YouTube by launching, and by launching convo with council, updating the city's website with helpful and timely information and maintaining an active Facebook presence with 40 posts in April alone. And as well, we have produced the Water and Sewer Rate Q and A. These are all significant steps forward and I want to thank everyone who's contributed to these improvements. That said, I also recognize that we still have work to do. A disconnect remains when it comes to messaging about upcoming projects or events. This challenge isn't unique to us. In my final years working in education, I saw how difficult it had become to communicate effectively with families. However, fewer people are reading printed materials and with local newspapers covering wider areas, neighborhood level stories often get lost or delayed. This past week, I asked friends of varying ages how they received news from the city. Their responses varied. One said, "I really don't get updates from the city." Another one said, "I get them from you." A third said, "By word of mouth," and the final, and most often, "I heard social media." That feedback tells me we're not reaching everyone in the ways that they prefer. I want to be clear to each of you, I'm not placing blame. I'm encouraged by our momentum and I'm hopeful that we can build upon it. Someday, some ideas I have considering this dilemma is a quarterly newspaper that summarizes past legislation and provides a calendar of upcoming events. In addition to a digital version, we could distribute printed copies at local businesses and agencies, possibly hiring a part-time communications or PR staff member. This would require a thoughtful cost benefit analysis by each of us. At a minimum, I would like to see us conduct a resident survey to better understand how people wish to receive information from us. With this data, we can develop a stronger, more targeted communication strategy and perhaps uncover tools we already have but we aren't fully utilizing. Thank you for your continued efforts. I welcome your feedback and ideas on how we keep, can keep improving our communication. That's it.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? All right, I have six, or 721 to go into executive session. Again, there will be no business to follow, but we will come back out and officially adjourn. So 721, executive session.